Good afternoon. Let's bring the meeting to order. Welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's July 7, 2011, meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with everything that has been said.
Thank you for everyone. I would note today that our proceedings are being livestreamed on the web. And we do have a quorum, and so the meeting is now called to order, and we will proceed along the items of, per the agenda as has been adopted. Item number one is the report of the chairman, and I do have a couple of items to report to you. First, we're going to create an NCPC Urban Design Task Force. As many of you know, staff has been working on updates to the federal elements of the comprehensive plan for the national capital, and that's on today's agenda. The update focuses on auditing the existing policies to ensure that they are supportive of Executive Order 13514, as well as other administration policies and priorities. Beyond this audit, the update effort includes the creation of a new federal element that will address urban design. To date, the federal elements have not specifically addressed the issue of urban design beyond various policies that have been scattered throughout the document and the other policies set forward in the preservation and historic features element. This new urban design element that we're going to establish will look to establish policies that address how federal facilities and campuses fit within the urban context of Washington, D.C., and the national capital region. It also looked better to find the degree of federal interest in the overall character and design of Washington, D.C. The element will look to build upon NCPC's past work, such as the Activating Public Spaces and the Height of Buildings Act, the policy work that we've done in those kinds of areas. To ensure that the new urban design element is fully coordinated and developed by consensus of stakeholders, I am creating the NCPC Urban Design Task Force. The goal of this task force will be to guide NCPC staff and agency stakeholders in addressing urban design issues related to the federal interest in the national capital region. The work of the task force will ultimately inform staff and the commission on the policies of the new urban design element in the comprehensive plan. The task force will include representatives from the following: General Services Administration, the National Park Service, Department of Defense, the District of Columbia Office of Planning, the Commission of Fine Arts, the Architect of the Capitol, and also a regional representative. And I'm going to ask Mina Wright of GSA, a commission member, to chair the task force. NCPC staff will support the work of the task force as it looks to address the design of federal facilities at the urban and suburban scale, while also addressing broader issues such as preservation and defining the federal interest in the overall design and character of the capital city. We have initially sketched out four meetings for our effort, but additional meetings may be necessary as we, as the program advances. The first meeting of the task force will be held in September 2011, and the task force will last approximately seven months. The outcome of the task force's work will be a set of recommended policies for the staff to incorporate into the new federal urban design element for the comprehensive plan. That ends that item. The second item I wanted to bring before you as part of the chairman's report is just to update you on the Southwest Echo District Task Force, which met yesterday. We met yesterday to review and comment on the sustainability strategies and development scenarios for the Southwest Echo District, formerly known as the 10th Street Corridor Task Force, between the mall and down to the waterfront and that whole precinct back in that area. In addition to looking at sustainability strategies and development scenarios for certain properties, we also talked yesterday about the DC Office of Planning's findings and their draft recommendations for Maryland Avenue, Southwest, and the Small Area Plan. Yesterday, the project team briefed the task force on the proposed urban design and sustainability framework that includes a range of revitalization scenarios and use mixes for the Echo District. Again, we met for about two and a half hours yesterday, and there were a number of takeaways from the meeting. First, we will continue to explore ways to improve the efficiency of the Co-Generation Plant, the GSA-owned Co-Generation Plant. We'll also look to reduce overall demand for energy by improving building efficiencies in the area, and then to capture, hold, and reuse rainwater, but do so at a district level. Second takeaway, that we felt that it is appropriate to study and analyze a range of rehab, redevelopment, and repurposing strategies, particularly along the 10th Street Corridor from the mall to the waterfront. Third, when developing the design framework for the 10th Street Southwest area, we want to see this as a place, more so than a street. Looking at it in that fashion will reorient everyone's thinking. And then last, we want to continue exploring opportunities to get the right type and the right amount of development along a reconstructed Maryland Avenue, which, again, the DC Office of Planning has been very, very much involved with. Going forward, NCPC and the DC Office of Planning are preparing two upcoming public meetings. Both will be held at the Office of Planning in Southwest, and that's located at 1104th Street, Southwest. The Office of Planning is going to host a meeting to review the findings and recommendations of Maryland Avenue. This will take place on July 14. Also, NCPC will host a meeting on July 26 to review the scenarios and strategies for the entire Southwest Echo District, and we will post these on the website, the NCPC website, one week prior to the meeting. And then the next task force meeting will be in October. So that concludes the chairman's report, just those two items. Are there any questions or comments on what I've reported? Hearing none. Item, Agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. In the interest of time, I will refer you to my written report, which is in your packet today. However, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce four new summer interns to our agency. So first, we have Deborah Schremer, who is a rising senior at the University of California at Davis. She's majoring in community and regional development. She's part of the University Summer in Washington Program and has recently returned from volunteer work in Honduras. Second, we have Justin Chapman. Justin is a mid-career student at Harvard University's Graduate School of Design, where he's obtaining a master's in design studies focusing on real estate development and investment. I'm also very pleased to let you know that we're hosting two students from a Mayor Gray's Summer Youth Program. Brielle Catalad is a rising junior at the University of Maryland Baltimore County, majoring in biology. And finally, we have John William Carroll, and John William joins the incoming freshman class this year at the University of Oklahoma, and he's majoring in meteorology. So we welcome all of you to NCPC.
Indeed, welcome. We're glad you're here. We welcome all of our interns. Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Agenda item number three is a legislative update, and we have Ms. Skylar.
Also, in the interest of time, I will refer you to the page four of the executive director's report, where you will find five pieces of legislation listed pertaining to commemorative works. These are the legislative items that I would have reported on verbally, but you can read about them in the report.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number four is one of particular pleasure, and it's our announcement of the President's Park South Design Competition winner. And for this, I'm going to assume the podium up front. Last Tuesday, NCPC's Interagency Security Task Force hosted a public showcase of design solutions to balance the need for security and openness in President's Park South. And on Wednesday, the task force met to select a winning team. Let me give you a little bit of background first on the process. In September 2001, East Street, just south of the White House, just south of the South Lawn, September 2001, East Street was closed to unauthorized traffic using temporary security barriers, and those temporary barriers are still in place today. They were erected primarily because the security threat at that time was significant, and that threat still exists, and it's very real today, and is expected to remain in place for the foreseeable future. For the last few years, NCPC's Interagency Security Task Force has been working with the National Park Service and the U.S. Secret Service to minimize the impacts this closure, this street closure, has had on the park. In March of this year, the National Park Service and the Secret Service initiated an environmental assessment to evaluate alternative approaches to redesign the security elements and to preserve the landscape within President's Park South. To support this effort, the National Capital Planning Commission conducted a design competition. The purpose of the design competition was to generate creative and thoughtful design concepts that would do two principal things. First, it would integrate durable and more aesthetic security elements into President's Park South. And second, it would improve the visitors' experience, the experience of the visitors who come to the White House or pass through that heavily-used park. In response to this design competition, a call was issued, and there were 23 very highly-qualified firms to express interest in participating in the design competition. Five were selected to participate in the design competition itself. The firms that participated in the design competition and who went to considerable efforts to develop proposals for consideration were these: Hood's, excuse me, Hood Design Studio, Michael Van Valkenburg Associates, Reed Hildebrand Associates, Rogers Marvel Architects, and Sasaki. These five firms were asked to develop their concepts for the competition. They're really focused on five things. First, to accomplish effective security for the White House and its grounds. Security was principal. Second, minimize conflicts between the official traffic entering that section, that closed section of East Street on the south side of the White House, and the visitors who are approaching and/or visiting or viewing the White House. Minimize those conflicts between traffic vehicles, between traffic and people. Third, create an attractive environment that is not dominated by security elements for the daily passersby and visitors approaching the southern fence of the White House. Fourth, maintain and preserve the historic integrity of President's Park South. And last, not preclude the possibility of reintroducing traffic along East Street Corridor should the threat environment change and the government elect to do so. On June 21, the five design proposals were made available to the public on the ncpc.gov website. They also were displayed at the White House Visitor Center. We did this to get as much public input as we possibly could, and happily, we had more than 130 comments from the public on the five designs that were put out there for consideration. Before I go further, I would like to recognize all five designers who submitted their work for consideration. I can assure you, an extraordinary amount of work went into each, each design proposal. And all of the proposals will receive further consideration, or elements of those proposals will receive further consideration and could be incorporated to some extent into the final design. While the winning firm may have the opportunity to enter into a contract with the National Park Service and to refine and execute their design, again, ideas from any of the five design concepts could be incorporated into a potential solution. The design competition is not the end, but it's frankly the beginning of a process where other ideas will be further tested and translated to the design. So with all of that, I don't have a drum roll, but with all of that, I'm pleased to announce that the Rogers Marvel Associates from New York is the winning firm. In selecting Rogers Marvel, the security task force noted that their design proposals extend the security parameter, perimeter outward in a bold and elegant way that allows for a larger, unobstructed interior public area, and it also reinforces the ellipse through a seating wall in grade changes into a very welcoming event space. And so I'm delighted to have with us today three from the firm: Rob Rogers, Jonathan Marvel, both principals, and then Tim Friat, who is a project manager for this project. And I welcome you to the podium.
Chairman and commissioners, thank you very much. We are, initially, we are incredibly honored to have been chosen to participate in the competition, especially amongst such esteemed peers as the list of five, and obviously delighted to be here today, to look forward to the opportunity to produce and develop ideas with you further in the future as we move forward. I'm standing here at the podium, but I'm representing actually a large, complex, and collaborative team that has put this project together, primarily my partner Jonathan Marvel and also Tim Friat of our office, but also key consultant groups Quinell Rothschild and Partners, landscape architects Duchabella Vinter and Santore Security Consultants, and Weilinger Associates Engineers. The challenge to take on the redesign of President's Park South and deal with really the, it's not just the issues since 2001, but really those that have aggregated over time as the park has taken on complex issues, is driven initially by security concerns and issues of the public realm. And we come to this work with a background mostly before working in New York City, but in the work of, in the public realm, dealing with security issues, and wanted to bring forward what we thought were two very fundamental principles that were the guiding points for our design. Number one is that the concentration and combination of barriers is fundamentally an issue and a problem, and that to begin to solve that problem, we needed to separate those barriers. And by doing so, you absolutely create better quality of public space, and you absolutely create better quality of security. So that was our sort of first principle, and that leads to a space that is a protected realm, really a secured executive realm, but that is also part fundamentally of a public park that is the middle, the center of the nation's capital. The second guiding principle for our competition scheme was that security tends to be expensive. And when you put it in, even though we talk a lot about whether it's temporary, or how long it's going to last, or how reversible it is, it is a major investment. And we believe that, in the end, if the only thing you get is security, then we haven't adequately utilized the investment. And so the, the goal is to create integrated schemes that involve landscape, public amenity, and opportunity, as well as security, so that the investment is made for everybody's benefit. So to that end, we felt that the extension of the barrier out and around the ellipse by developing it as a wall and bench creates and actually heightens the quality and the importance of the ellipse, not just as a public gathering space, but also as the recreational space for the residents and the workers here in Washington. It's really a dual-function space. So we wanted the ellipse to be reconstructed with a robust structural turf, like we know in New York on the Great Lawn or at the Sheep's Meadow, that can take the kind of incredible activity that is both the recreation, but also the celebratory of the events and those pieces. And to create that ellipse, we're actually going to erect a wall that solves the broadest extent of the anti-ram measures, that is also a bench to the ellipse, so that we formalize the promenade around the ellipse up to the White House, and confront the kind of 20th and 21st century of issue of surface parking, also being in the middle of this public park, and regrade and rework the parking so that it actually manages storm water into a vegetated swale at a more informal ring just outside the wall of the ellipse. So you can imagine that there's a sort of parallel route, a more formal route proceeding around the ellipse, and a more informal route for those who park it, or daily users who are moving in the shade through the vegetated swell. This also will be the key to managing most of the storm water issues. As you, as you may know, this site was originally a swamp, so in fact, its drainage issues are complex, and we look forward to resolving that with this sort of peak of sustainability features with the vegetated swale perimeter. The raising of the ellipse to create that barrier wall and those issues also tips the plane up, really presenting the park back to the White House a little bit and presenting the people. We felt like it's a better balance between the executive and the, and the people occupying the park in terms of this view. It gives us the dimension for anti-ram strength, and it also helps disguise that surface parking from the views within the ellipse and up on the East Street connection. As, as the East Street corridor and the top of the ellipse exist today, it is highly constrained. There's really minimal amount of movement, minimal amount of choice. If any large group is in place, it actually becomes almost impossible to move around or manage your group, or even a family or a pair of people, relative to that experience. And it tends to be pushed on, and people want to move through. A very uncomfortable and unforgiving kind of experience to be at the, at the White House fence. And we felt by expanding that barrier, not only are we creating the perimeter for executive security, we're also increasing pedestrian and public security from potential events in this congregation space as well, and that it was fundamentally that it be open publicly and open for choice and open for, for group gathering at the south of the gardens. What is, what is there today that separation is absolute? Many, many layers of barriers, both visual and physical, between there, and our proposition is to remove all of those by separating out the barriers, leaving just the historic set of bollards and the historic iron fence that surround the, the White House. Now, raising the roadbed, creating a pedestrianized space, and actually letting the top of the ellipse create the foreground itself for that view into the White House. But creating this openness doesn't mean that you have to eliminate or lose control of the space. We see it as being completely open to pedestrians, but also having natural boundaries, so if we need to pull back quickly for a first family member takes a walk outside, or if you have Marine One coming in and you've got a midway perimeter, or even for those organized events where you actually have made a more permanent boundary where you can really control pedestrian and public events within the space. It's critical to us that East Street remain as a fundamental visual and pedestrian corridor. And so this is the entry from, from 15th. It's clear, it's controlled, it's open, and we feel it's important to be obvious to everybody how to move through that space so that the separation of traffic and pedestrians is clearly delineated by landscape and materials. And as we enter the site, we really wanted to reconstruct and imagine how these, we've called them the upper side panels, or the shoulders almost of the ellipse, that they bear a lot of the burden now of the changing program of the park. And that means managing events, managing traffic, letting the parking enter and exit, and developing those pieces to take on those things that the park must do now that it was not originally designed to do. And so we wanted to look back to history, especially the A.J. Downing Plan from the 1850s, where those upper panels were subdivided and broken into smaller elements, and reutilize that strategy, incorporating buildings for concessions, buildings for maintenance facilities, landscape, seating, places of respite. So just on the side of that primary center experience wherein you're in the view corridor to the, to the White House, you actually have a place to rest, take a break, have an ice cream cone, get a water. But it also lets us introduce the Sallyport as simply one more pieces of the programmatic function that are a piece of the shoulders of that park. And although it's, we've diagrammed extensive operations, I won't go into here, about how to use these spaces for event staging, how to manage motorcades, those specific elements, the idea is really that these are park spaces that are open and inviting to pedestrian activity, that can handle the extensive program of special events, but also operate simply on an open, everyday basis. And the anti-ram elements in this portion of the park are actually incorporated into the walls and benches that manage the planting and the surrounds. There's only one place where we've kind of uninvited pedestrians, and that's in the search and ID areas surrounding the Sallyports for vehicle entries. We're using very low-level plantings and curbs to gently and modestly separate those security operations from the pedestrian and tourist movement. So we are proposing that there will be structures erected in this portion of East Street to manage those operations for the quality and control of the personnel and, and even the canine activities that need to take place in those areas. And we realize that the, this park is not just a daytime place, but it's also very magic in the evening and at dusk, especially for the local residents, and as a place on the nighttime tours, and when that invitation needs to be extended throughout the evening, and that the opportunity now to light the ellipse in a more formal way from the seat wall, allowing the traditional lighting still to engage the parking and the informal routes of the park, give us the opportunity to re-present the ellipse in the context of Washington, D.C. overall, and make the fundamental connection between the president and the people that is at the core of President's Park South. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rogers, thank you very much, and we want to again congratulate Rogers Marvel for preparing such a thoughtful, beautiful proposal. Congratulations for winning the competition. And from this point, just so folks know, that Rogers Marvel will be more formally engaged with the National Park Service to perhaps carry the design to the next step. And I also want to acknowledge Bill Dowd and his team for more than a year has been working to prepare for and then execute this design competition. It's been a lot of hours from Mr. Dowd and his staff, and want to acknowledge Bill and his, a lot of, all of his work. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to, as a, as a local person, we've been hoping that East Street would open some point in time, but I don't think that's going to happen. We understand that. I think we've got to accept it. But the kind of work they've done is so, 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 so fine, and to the staff of NCPC and to them, thank you very much. I had a couple of questions. One, you mentioned historical ballots. Have they got, have they been around so long now that they've become historical, or were they really historical ballots? I mean, are they just there because they were there a long time, or are they historical, really historical?
Well, that, that...
Well, that ring has been there the longest period of time. That's at the first curb just outside the fence. And it also, we left them there because that marks the historical line of where the roadbed and sidewalk have been, and we felt that that is appropriate to leave as a marker of that point in time, and it also does function as a secondary boundary, which was part of the competition brief.
Yeah, I think, I just was curious, we had ballots now becoming historical, but I can understand why they are. Thank you very much again for what you've done, and it seems to be a space we can now enjoy more and more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item five on the agenda on the schedule is the consent calendar. Let me read them first. Read them for the public record. Item 5A is the West Facade modification at the National Museum of American History. 5B is the Radnor Heights Station at Joint Base Meyer-Henderson Hall. 5C is the modification of an existing cellular antenna installation on Building 92 at Joint Base Anacostia Bowling. 5D is the existing of six existing AT&amp;T, I'm sorry, is the renewal of six existing AT&amp;T antennas and the addition of three new antennas at the Henry A. Wallace Beltsville Agriculture Research Center. And last, item 5E is the Federal Capital Improvements Program for the National Capital Region for fiscal years 2012 through 2017. Are there any questions on any item on the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve items 5A through 5E? There is a motion, and I think there is a second. All in favor of the consent calendar being approved, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Consent calendar is approved. Agenda item 6A is the amendments to the federal workplace and transportation elements of the comprehensive plan for the National Capitol. We have David Zaden, Mr. Zaden from staff, to present. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, members of the Commission. The next agenda item is the federal elements of the comprehensive plan for the National Capitol. Staff has worked with our stakeholders to develop a draft, a set of draft updated policies to the transportation workplace elements, and we are currently requesting authorization to release these draft policy updates for public comment and additional agency comment for a 60-day review period. At the conclusion of that period, we will revise the policies in accordance with some of the comments and direction we've received and bring them back to the Commission for a final adoption. Just to give a little bit of background on comprehensive planning in the National Capitol, the comprehensive plan is basically broken into two different elements, the district and federal elements. The district elements deal with traditional comprehensive planning issues such as land use and housing and transportation within the District of Columbia. That set of elements is developed by the district and then legislated by city council and then brought to NCPC for review. And as the Commission may remember, the most recent update from the District of Columbia on their elements was brought here in January for federal interest review where the Commission concluded no negative impact to the federal interest on those elements. The federal elements are provided by NCPC and they guide the activities, they set policies and goals for federal activities in the National Capitol Region for the federal government. These elements were most recently adopted in 2004, and we've initiated these policy updates to begin updating those ideas. So why update the policies? First, there has been a tremendous amount of attention and policy guidance to the federal government related to its environmental impacts, particularly sustainability. This is most notably represented in the Executive Order 13514, which is the Federal Leadership and Environmental Energy and Economic Performance Executive Order. This has set some very progressive and strict goals for the federal government, and the comp plan policies should support those initiatives. Also, the comprehensive plan should be a living document, and the policies contained in should be evaluated on a regular basis to ensure their effectiveness, compatibility with the district elements, as well as reflecting the changing development patterns in the region. And finally, we want to add a new urban design element. As the Chairman mentioned in his report, the current federal elements do not have a specific element that focus on urban design. There are a sporadic set of policies that address these types of issues, but we think it's time to focus the federal elements to deal with urban design in the National Capitol Region. And this was something that was discussed in 2004, and we feel it's a good time to pursue it now. Just to talk briefly on our coordination and outreach for this effort. The draft policy updates have been vetted through a working group. We've formed a working group that consists of federal and district stakeholders as well as the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, and they've provided very good feedback and ideas on these draft policies. Two public meetings on these issues were held in November 2010 and April 2011. An educational video has been released, which is available on the NCPC website, which gives the public some background on comprehensive planning. A live online chat has been held both with Greater Greater Washington and DC MUD, which has been part of our agency outreach to engage the blogging community. And during the 60-day public comment period, we will be holding a public meeting to help spur some further input from the public on these issues, and that will be held in August. Okay, to talk about the transportation element. The transportation element was added in 2004, and it really guides the federal government's policies on not only federal employee commuting but also how it supports and invests in the regional transportation network in the National Capitol Region. It also creates standards and goals for federal facilities, and many of the federal facilities that are brought before you for Commission review are assessed in comparison to these standards and goals. But additionally, it also provides data. The comprehensive plan tracks data across a range of issues, which reflects how the federal government is performing in the National Capitol Region. And in the realm of transportation, we thought it was important to do a check on how the federal government was commuting in the National Capitol Region, given the impacts of those patterns. So we thought the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments Household Commuter Survey was a good guide to give us data on this. And their most recent survey was conducted from 2007 to 2008, and that reflects that the federal government is commuting, has been improving since the last survey was conducted, which was done in 1994. As the data shows here, the federal employees are using transit more and using other modes as well, although the driving alone statistic has decreased. Still, a little over 54% of the federal employees are driving alone in single occupancy vehicles, and we hope to see this change in the coming years. Another interesting statistic from this survey was the comparison of federal employees versus the region as a whole. And in essence, the federal government is performing better than the regional employees and commuting patterns. Again, federal employees are driving in single occupancy vehicles 54% of the time. However, from a regional standpoint, 73% of the region is driving in single occupancy vehicles. And then in the realms of transit, the federal workforce is using transit 33% of the time, I'm sorry, 33% of the employees are using transit as a daily method of commuting compared to 13% of the region. So while we do see that there are some needs for improvement in these areas, particularly through the non-transit, non-driving modes, the federal government as a whole, according to survey, is doing better. So to talk about the draft policy updates, there's a whole package of updates that are available in your EDR and will also be available to the public through our website. I'm just going to highlight some certain areas that we've concentrated on with our working group and also internally. The first area is the area of transportation management plans, which is a very, very critical piece of planning for federal facilities, particularly larger federal facilities over 100 employees or more. The draft policy updates encourage TMPs to really focus on active commuting and teleworking as well as flexible schedules in establishing their TMP goals. It also looks to incorporate the goals from each agency's Strategic Sustainability Performance Plan. Every agency in the federal government under the Executive Order 13514 is required to develop this plan to show how they're meeting the goals of the Executive Order, and we think it's important that these goals and how they plan on meeting them should be incorporated into TMPs. Further, the TMPs should include mitigation measures when a facility may cause adjacent effective corridors to fail. This is basically requiring an analysis of adjacent transportation corridors that link to the site that because of the facility may be causing negative impacts, and the TMP should develop mitigation measures that can then be assessed by the Commission in the approval review process. Also, the TMP should include implementation strategies with timetables, and the update reiterates the need that TMPs should be reevaluated every two years for their effectiveness and also to ensure that these timetables and strategies are being met. Another area of focus in the transportation policy updates is that of active commuting and bicycling. As part of implementing Executive Order 13514, the Council on Environmental Quality issued guidelines for active commuting, which they defined as a method of commuting that is properly conducted by one or more of a range of physical methods, including bicycling, walking, running, or other method. And they've instructed federal agencies to start encouraging this type of commuting, and we think it's important that the comprehensive plan reflect that. So the draft policy updates encourage federal facilities to meet the standards of local jurisdictions in providing bicycle and active commuting facilities. We did some surveying of communities throughout the region on their standards for bicycle facilities and bicycle rack provision, and they're all being upgraded to reflect new networks in their communities, and it's important that federal facilities meet these standards when planning for their facilities. Also, federal facilities should start encouraging the use of bicycle sharing programs. These types of sharing programs can provide a different mode of transportation for federal employees in getting to meetings and also commute to work. Also, providing connections and access to regional and neighborhood trail networks is an important part as well, and ensuring that federal facilities can be integrated into the regional and local bicycle network. Another area of focus in our analysis was looking at the parking ratios. As many of you know, the comprehensive plan sets goals for parking for federal facilities within the central employment area, within the District of Columbia, and within the region. And in comparing these ratios to the standards of local communities, we think these ratios are performing well. They're still progressive compared to those standards. However, we are adding a requirement or at least a goal that federal facilities in the region should account for the availability of regional transit such as MARC or VRE or even other regional transit services of similar capacity when planning the facilities and in providing parking. And this additional language is reflected in the paragraph to the left-hand corner of the screen. So beyond the transportation element, we also reviewed the federal workplace element.
Can I ask a question according to your story? Take it.
Sure, go ahead.
Page on transportation.
Which slide, Jean?
The parking.
Okay.
So the ratio of parking is one-ish, is one thing. I know GSA recently announced a policy maybe yesterday that they are not going to be paying, that they're not going to be, something like that, not paying for parking spaces. It's not just the amount of parking, it's whether or not a market price is being charged for that parking. And I know that's a policy that's extremely variable across the federal government, so I would just suggest beyond ratios, something about market signals, incentives or disincentives about parking, I think needs to be part of the transportation element.
Okay, so moving on to the federal workplace, the federal workplace element provides several things. It provides data on federal employment in the National Capitol Region. It also establishes policy guidance on the location of federal facilities. Location decisions for the federal government are made through a variety of different processes. Some include consultation with NCPC and some do not. However, it's still important that the comprehensive plan establish a vision and goals for location priorities within the National Capitol Region. The federal workplace element also establishes policies which guide how the federal government engages neighboring communities as they go about their work. So some data on regional employment and federal employment was collected, and this was a product of a parallel project, which was conducted by Julia Koster and Kayle Anderson in our office, and they used a different approach compared to past comprehensive plans. The current approach takes Bureau of Economic Analysis numbers, which gives a much clearer picture of federal employment in the region. And as an example, in the past comprehensive plans, the federal employment reported in comprehensive plans did not account for certain agencies such as the Post Office. This new approach to data collection does include that. So some of the data that we uncovered included how the federal employment compares to regional employment, and the interesting note here is that the share of federal employment compared to regional employment has been declining since 1990. In 1990, the federal employment accounted for about 17.6%, and in 2009, it was roughly at 12.8%. In looking at the geographic share or the proportion of federal employment in the National Capitol Region, it has been pretty much steady with a little over 50% of federal employment being located in the District of Columbia, a little around 20% being located in Maryland, and then around the balance, around 30% being located in Virginia. And we think this is a reflection not only of existing federal location policies but also agency preference. So to talk about federal location decisions, which is a very critical part of the workplace element, there are current policies that guide federal facility location, and this is federal government-wide. First is the Rural Development Act of 1972, which directs federal agencies to locate in rural town centers when locating in rural areas. The second is the Executive Order 12072, the Federal Space Management Executive Order, which directs federal agencies to locate in central employment areas when locating in urban areas. And that's an important point for the comprehensive plan, and I'll discuss more in just a second. The Executive Order 13006 requires federal agencies to focus on historic properties when locating in the core of central areas. So there's this layer of location policies that affect the federal government wide. Also, the recommendations on sustainable siting for federal facilities was released by the Council on Environmental Quality, and this has provided further guidance for federal agencies in meeting their sustainability goals, and it really focuses on them on locating close to transit and affordable housing. So in looking at the priorities of the comp plan in these draft policy updates, the policies established the central employment area as the priority area. This is a defined area, which is represented in this graphic, that is defined by the District of Columbia through city council and incorporated into the federal comp plan by NCPC. It's a priority area given for federal office locations. GSA will oftentimes give it preference in awarding space in their prospectuses if a space is located within the CEA. It is also the greatest concentration of transit infrastructure in the region. The flaw of the current CEA is that it has been dealt with on a piecemeal basis, and there really needs to be a more formal process in evaluating the CEA so that it reflects current transit investments as well as development goals of the district. Calling for that process is a part of this comprehensive plan update. We've added a policy saying that this should be reviewed on a five-year basis with the comp plan, and we look forward to working with the district and GSA outside of the comp plan update to really establish this process. But this is the first step in doing that. The second kind of layer of priority is of transit accessibility. And in analyzing this, we really reviewed on how you define transit accessibility, and the sustainable siting policies that I just described provide a definition that we think is a good starting point for this. And those policies define a well-served transit stop as a transit service that provides at least 10-minute headways during the peak hours and at least 15-minute headways during the off-peak hours with operations for at least 14 hours daily. So we think this is a good starting point for providing a location decision for federal facilities and locating close to transit. And finally, in looking at the workplace element, we thought it was important to really assess how these policies support community development, and these policy updates reflect some of the ongoing work that's been happening, not only in the district but in the region. First, when federal facilities are located near existing or planned business districts, competing uses or amenities should not be provided within the campuses or in the facility. So this encourages federal employees to patronize adjacent business districts and help establish community business districts in the communities in which these facilities are located. Also, the policy updates encourage more public-private partnerships so that Also, the, the policy updates encourage more public-private partnerships so that, that can create job training opportunities to help meet federal workforce needs and again, help assist in community development. And finally, the policy updates encourage the co-location of federal laboratories with other research institutions to create innovation clusters, which is something that the, the federal government has been working on with local jurisdictions, and it's similar to an effort happening at St. Elizabeth's. So, that's just a summary of, of the policy updates in the transportation and workplace element, and again, they're, they're fully detailed in the EDR and will be available on the, the NCPC website for the public. So, what's next? For the transportation and workplace elements, the comment period will run from July 11th to September 12th, although we've already updated the website to have these available. Materials in a comment portal are available at ncpc.gov/compplan. Public comments can also be emailed directly through a, a email address we've set up, which is compplan@ncpc.gov. A public meeting will be held on Wednesday, August 10th here at NCPC to say that we can formally present these updates to the public and get additional feedback in that forum. NCPC staff revised policies based on comments this fall, and this includes comments not only from the public, but additional agency comments, which we're hoping to receive. And then we'll bring the final elements to the commission towards the year's end, and I say towards the year's end because it really depends on the breadth of comments that we received and the level of revision we need to do. Beyond the transportation and workplace elements, we will be starting the work on the urban design element, and as, again, as the chairman mentioned, we will be forming the Urban Design Task Force, which will be kicking off in September. So, the executive director's recommendation is that the commission authorizes the release of the draft policy updates for these elements for a 60-day public comment period, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions or comments? Mr. Hart?
As a point of clarification, in your slides, you use the language, at least 10-minute headways, 15-minute headways. Do I understand that that means no more than 10 or 15-minute headways?
The way I understand it from the policies, that's an average of 10-minute headways, so as long as the transit, from the way they're evaluated, as long as they're averaging 10-minute headways, that they would be, they would qualify under that definition.
Okay.
Those policies are still being reviewed. CEQ has released them, and they're being reviewed by OMB, but we're tracking them because we feel like since that's guiding policies from the federal government, federal government-wide, they should also be incorporated into the comp plan, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Barantia?
Couple of questions. Thank you for the good presentation, also for reaching out and including our agency, for example, has served on the transportation working group, which we appreciate and value that, that opportunity. Acknowledging that what is proposed today is just approval to issue the draft for 60-day public review, we just had a couple of preliminary comments, both on the transportation element as fellows, as well as the workforce element. We, I think there's many positive things in here that would have prevented some of the experiences that we've had here coming before the commission, such as the mitigation measures for adjacent affected corridors and networks. I'm thinking about the St. Elizabeth's versus the Joint Base Anacostia-Bolling planning that's occurring side by side. There's a little bit of vagueness in some of the language. There's some, some draft language, for example, this point about submitting updated TMPs with all master plans for projects that employ more than 100 employees. It's not real clear what updated means. There's a requirement to submit, I think, TMPs every two years. We would think that that might be adequate. What I'm trying to do is just give you a preview of some of the comments that you might expect from our agency, formally when the, during the review period, so clarification of what updated means, I think, would be a good, good effort. While we're absolutely supportive of biking, for a long time, we've had access along the west side of the Pentagon, along Highway 27, to hiker-biker trails along the east side, along Boundary Channel. Recently, there was an additional request for a third bike access along the southeast corner from the GW Parkway. We also have some competing security interests, so sometimes when we say let's require trails through agency properties as opposed to adjacent, alongside, in the neighborhood, those types of things, I think the language is a bit restrictive.
Okay.
On the issue of biking, I also understand that there is some intent to take out the, either the requirement or the encouragement for agencies to provide showers and locker rooms. If, if that is in fact the case, and clearly that's a little bit of a discouragement and a detriment to the proliferation of the biking program, which seems to be growing by leaps and bounds across the NCR. Location of facilities. While locating facilities adjacent to other agencies that they interact with, I think in principle, is, is an excellent concept, it's tough sometimes even to do within buildings to locate functions, adjacents, so that you get the synergy and the functional adjacent. We find a lot of our business is kind of assembly line, it passes from, from one person to the other. Difficult to do within buildings, I think doubly difficult to do when you look, try to locate campuses and, and facilities adjacent. Good concept, but I think difficult to, to execute and, and possibly expensive. In the transportation element, it talks also about the central employment area and acknowledges that, but I think, while it's absolutely, I think, accurate, the language is concentration of transit, transit infrastructure was the language in the presentation, that's exactly true, but I think that's only part of the equation. The other parts of the equation is what are the capacities of the transit infrastructure in the central area and what's the utilization rates? As I recall, there is some analysis of the entire system, it looks at capacity versus utilization, and particularly sites that the distal ends of the metro system are underutilized, and there is excess, excess capacity. So, perhaps some language that would encourage facilities to go into those areas also would, would be good.
Okay.
It talks about potentially deleting requirement, there's a language in there about revitalizing, revitalizing economically distressed areas. As we have seen the growth kind of of our mission over the years to also encourage economic development and expansion, I think it would be a step backward to remove those types of, of languages. I think many times putting a federal facility in a distressed area is a good catalyst and an impetus to, to local development, so we'd encourage that to, to be retained. There's also a proposal, I think, to delete some language about reducing consumption of non-renewable energy resources. That might also be a little bit of a setback. Clearly, energy management and reducing consumption through alternate energy, through energy efficiencies, should be sustained and supported by the elements of the plan. I think that's about all I had.
Yeah, I think you, you've hit on kind of the, the tricky part of, of doing this type of update is because some of that was not, some of that, particularly the language about distressed areas and energy resources, isn't something that, we're not deleting that language because we don't believe in that goal, it's because some of it was redundant language, some of it, we worked into other areas, and the energy resources, we definitely want to keep in there, and we'll clarify that, but we also see that becoming a major component of the environmental element and even the urban design element to an extent, so, but we'll, we'll clarify all that in the update.
And reiterating the security requirements in the workplace section, talks about supporting local development's objectives. Well, well, that's clearly important where security requirements would permit that. There's also a section about, in the managing work, federal workplaces, as security requirements permit, is probably a good standard.
Okay.
Terminology you repeat wherever it's, it's appropriate.
Okay.
Some agencies have, as we know, higher security requirements than, than others, and we just need to, I think, be respectful and acknowledge that.
We can, absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you mind speaking to the one point that was raised about the changing requirements for shower facilities and such for?
Yeah, basically, that was just to, to concentrate them and call them support facilities. If you, if you look at the, the active commuting and bicycle things, we definitely were not discouraging the, the inclusion of, of showers. That's also in one of the, the standards where we're saying, or the, one of the policies where we're saying that federal agencies should look at the local jurisdiction's requirements because they often require that as well, so we thought that'd be a second driver, but that's definitely something that we're not looking to get away from, and, and I'll make sure that that's reiterated, so.
So, when are you going to put in the shower facilities here at NCPC? It was very hot today.
We have, we have them downstairs.
You have them here?
Yeah.
Are they? Where, oh, anybody can use them?
I don't know the building policy, but we can look in there.
Oh, okay. That qualifies, just having a gym?
No, I understand. What's that? You have a fob, right?
No, I don't. No, I don't.
Okay.
Anyway, no, but seriously, for, for a building like this, where it's a gym facility, do you have to, what do you have to do to be able to use it?
From my understanding, it's, if you're a tenant, we, we have.
Oh, if you, as, as long as you're a tenant, you can use it?
Yeah, we all have access to it.
Okay, another reason.
And I, and a lot of that is a product of, of the district's regulations for that, so, we think the federal government should meet those standards as well.
Right, but that would really only apply if it's a leased building, right?
Right, but we think, but, but what the comp plan's doing is saying that the federal government, as they develop their facilities, they should, they should develop the local, the local jurisdiction's standards because they're all, they're all appropriate to the, to the bicycling network in which is in that community, so.
Okay, good, thanks.
It's all about Peter. Other questions or comments for Mr. Zaden? The EDR before you, again, your vote today is to authorize the release of this policy draft for a 60-day public comment period. Is there, there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Zaden. Item 6B is the National Museum of the United States Army North Post at Fort Belvoir, and we have Ms. Kelly. Welcome.
Today, I will be presenting two projects at Fort Belvoir submitted by the Army. The first project is the National Museum of the United States Army, and it was submitted for preliminary site and building plans. The Army submitted the museum for concept design back in July of 2010, for which the commission provided comments as part of the consent calendar. The museum will be located on the north post of Fort Belvoir, close to the northwest boundary of Fort Belvoir, along Fairfax County Parkway. The site is currently improved as part of the north post golf course, and you can see the golf course located here. On the west side of the site is also a stream as well as an access road, which you can kind of make out in the aerial here. The Army is proposing to reuse the access road to access the museum. The site slopes upward from Fairfax County as well as the stream and the access road to create a plateau, and the intent of the design for the museum is to keep most of the design, or the components for the museum on this plateau. The museum is surrounded by residential on the western side, this is off-post, as well as the remainder of the golf course to the north. To the east is John J. Kingman Road. In between the road and the museum is a wildlife corridor that was established at Fort Belvoir in the 1990s as mitigation for BRAC during that time. Here you can see the proposed site design for the museum. The Army is proposing to access the museum off of Fairfax County at an aggregate intersection. While the museum is on Fort Belvoir, the access off of Fairfax County Parkway allows patrons to the museum, to access the museum without going through Fort Belvoir security. The museum will be situated in the south side of the site, and then to the north of that will be a parking lot that houses approximately 530 vehicles. There will also be a staff parking lot that meets the current parking ratio requirement of the comp plan, that will be 50 spaces, and then there is an overflow lot that will be constructed of turf for 120 spaces. On the eastern side of the site, there are informal pathways for patrons to traverse the site, as well as there is a formal pathway along the east side of the parking lot that will lead to the entry of the museum. Next to the entry plaza is a memorial garden as well as an amphitheater. Also proposed is a parade field and a grandstand. Service to the site will be accessed to the south. I would note that the, along the access road in this location are proposed sculptural elements, and you'll see that in the next image here, and they are proposed to illustrate soldiers throughout the United States history. These renderings also show the difference between the concept design massing and the proposed preliminary massing design. It has been refined, the building has gotten lower in height, it was a six-level building and is now a five-level building, and the design concept for the museum is a collection of pavilions, metal pavilions that will connect to a glass entry pavilion, and you can see that proposed elevation for the museum at the entrance. Staff analyzed the project against the commission's comments back at concept design in July of 2010, as well as the commission's comment that they may find it difficult to approve projects at Fort Belvoir without an updated master plan. The commission made this comment back in April of 2010 at the time of the review for the PX and the USO, as well as we received multiple comments from Fairfax County, which are attached to your EDR, and staff reviewed the project against these comments. We also have recommendations for the Army as they move forward with the final design. Here you can see the changes in the site layout compared from concept design to preliminary design. The commission at concept design made four comments. The first comment was that the, that they recommend that the Army reevaluate the access road to the site. At concept design, it traversed all the way to the northern section of the site, and you can see how the Army has shortened the length of the access road and now accesses the site in the middle of the site. Also, at concept design, the commission requested that the Army evaluate the, the configuration of the parking lot in order to minimize impervious surfaces, and you can see how the Army has responded to that comment. One of the commission's comments at concept design was also that the Army evaluate different access points to the museum, specifically off of John J. Kingman Road. The Army has provided information to staff about how this access would be unfeasible, and we have reviewed this information and find it sufficient. The remaining comment at concept design was regarding alternative transportation to the museum, and at that time, the commission encouraged the Army to evaluate alternative modes of transportation, and staff is continuing to encourage this, and you'll see that in your EDR. At the April 7th, 2011 meeting, the commission reviewed the PX and USO project, and at that time noted to Fort Belvoir that it may find it difficult to approve projects at Fort Belvoir due to the fact that the existing master plan was last approved in 1993 and currently does not show the existing or future conditions of Fort Belvoir. And without an updated master plan, it may be difficult to approve projects because of the lack of sufficient information. Therefore, staff analyzed the project to ensure that there was sufficient information to analyze the project, as well as that there was sufficient coordination with the community and local stakeholders. For this project, the Army has conducted two environmental assessments. The first environmental assessment addressed different sites at Fort Belvoir, and ultimately, the Army chose to go with the site you see today. The second environmental assessment analyzed the design of the museum at this site as well as the reconfiguration of the golf course. The project has been submitted for concept design and now preliminary design, and due to the lack of an updated master plan, staff has referred the project twice to state and local entities, and we have received comments at both stages. As well as the Army has been, has conducted multiple meetings regarding concerns from Fairfax County and with staff, and in January, met with Fairfax County and staff to go over the changes from concept design to preliminary design. Therefore, staff believes that there is sufficient information to fully analyze the project, and we do not believe that the commission should disapprove the project due to the lack of a master plan. Fairfax County, as I mentioned, has submitted comments. Fairfax County, as I mentioned, has submitted comments, and they have, which are attached to EDR, and the main theme of the comments are regarding environmental quality corridors, stormwater management, and alternative modes of transportation. An environmental quality corridor, or EQC, is a policy, a local policy from Fairfax County in an attempt to protect their stream valleys. And essentially, an EQC is defined by the stream, wetlands, floodplains, as well as slopes. And here you can see the stream Kieranan Run on the western side of the property, and the delineation of an EQC as provided by the Army. Fairfax County notes that they believe that the EQC is improperly delineated by the Army. However, the Army has conducted multiple site analysis, and has determined that this is the location for the EQC, and we encourage the Army to share this information with Fairfax County as they move forward. I will note that the access road to the museum does traverse through the EQC, however, this is allowed in the policy. Here you can see the proposed stormwater management for the site. The Army is proposing infiltration galleries and bioswells on the eastern side of the parking lot, as well as the eastern side of the museum. Fairfax County noted, and staff notes, that the stormwater management calculations were not available at the time of preliminary review, and that we are unable to determine if these will meet stormwater requirements. Fairfax County also noted that the EPA has, has determined total maximum daily loads for the Accoutin Creek area, and there is no information at this time as to whether or not the project will meet these requirements, and Fairfax County recommends, encourages the Army to meet with them so that they can discuss strategies to meet stormwater and TMDL requirements at this site. The last of the county's comments pertain to alternative transportation options to the site. They noted that the Route 1 widening project will include bus rapid transit or light rail system, and that the Army should evaluate connections to the system in the future, and we encourage the Army to work with the county on this in Denver. As I stated, staff has recommendations for the Army as they move forward with the design. The first recommendation is the reforestation of Swink Road, which is the access road the Army is proposing to use for the site. With the shortening in the length of the access road, the remainder of Swink Road is unnecessary, and we encourage the Army to evaluate restoring this to a more natural We are also encouraging the Army to evaluate a focal point at the end of the drive aisle. This could be a sculptural or architectural element in this location. Staff would like to note if a patron parks in the upper parking lot and traverses down to the museum, this is approximately 1,300 feet, or a quarter of an acre, and while the Army is proposing to provide shuttles through the parking area, if a patron does choose to walk to the museum, we are encouraging the Army to evaluate pedestrian amenities along the walkway, such as seating. Here you can see the proposed tree clearing for the site, and there is a two-acre area in the south of the site that the Army proposed to selectively clear in order to provide an iconic view of the building from the access road. And staff encourages the Army to evaluate additional landscaping in this area, we are concerned with the loss of vegetation along the hillside and the potential erosion of the hillside. The last remaining comment is that we encourage the Army to evaluate, continue to reduce impervious surfaces on the site. While the design has reduced the impervious surface from concept to preliminary design, we continue to encourage the Army to evaluate reducing this. Currently, the amount of impervious on site is approximately 13 acres, and we can, and we encourage the Army to reduce this as much as possible.
Ms. Kelly, before you go off of that slide, those suggestions that you have there, have you had sufficient or detailed enough conversations with the Army that you can characterize their receptiveness to some of these suggestions, or is it premature?
The Army will continue to evaluate any comments that the commission has. I don't see this as a set requirement, these are evaluations, and we'll work with the Army to come out to an outcome. And with that, that's the executive director's recommendation, that the commission approve the preliminary site and building plans for the National Museum of the Army at Fort Belvoir, and recommends that the Army incorporate the following in the final project design: Opportunities for restoration of Swink Road that is not being used for access to the project site; An architectural or sculptural element at the end of the entrance drive aisle to provide a focal point; Pedestrian amenities; Additional landscaping to minimize erosion of the hillside; And reconfiguration or redesigning the parking lot to, in order to minimize impervious surfaces. Recommends that prior to submitting the project for final design, the Army coordinate with Fairfax County and staff on the county's comments, particularly determining the project's effects on the EQC, providing and coordinating on stormwater management techniques and TMDLs, and identifying opportunities for alternative modes of transportation, including bicycling and pedestrian amenities and bus connections. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Other questions for Ms. Kelly on this project?
As well as, we also have the Army here to answer any-
Terrific, terrific. Mr. Revancha?
Appreciate, thank you, Ms. Kelly, for that thorough report. I think there's very many positive examples of collaboration between the staff and the Army. Just to delineate a few, reduction in the building height from six to five levels, reducing the footprint of the parking lot, like the chairman, what's enough, what's the success, where did we start? We're down to 13 acres, is 12 and 1/2 enough, is 11 enough, is four enough? Just, that needs to be, I think, solidified. Reducing the length and the path of the access road is a good, another good gesture on the part of the Army. It's a little bit intuitive, though, when you drive in an access road and you go by the structure and go to a distant parking lot that you think you may have bypassed what you came to visit. The past and ongoing coordination with Fairfax County, I think, is also a good faith gesture by the Army, looking at alternative modes of transportation is just one of several examples. The corridor, I think, while on the slide, looks an awful lot like a FIBA, which is a term of art that's familiar to Army folks. It is not actually a FIBA. FIBA is Forward Edge of the Battle Area, so it's clearly not a line of demarcation, of confrontation with the county of Fairfax, but more an area of collaboration. I was, on the characterization of not having the stormwater calculations available at, as the preliminary design developed, you see that as a deficiency that was an expectation that you had, that the Army did not or has not yet fulfilled?
No.
Or is it, as the design furthers developed, you'll get those calculations at the proper time?
We'll get those calculations by final design. We just encourage the Army to meet with us in Fairfax County prior to submission of final design.
Okay, good. It looks like the total site is 83 acres. Our only caution to the Army is, just because it's available doesn't necessarily mean that we should use every available acreage. I think the accommodations with the parking lot are good. The quarter-mile walking distance could, as you said, even with the shuttle, might be challenging, sometimes a wraparound parking lot with the structure in the center. Given that, there's an awful lot on this site. There's the building, there's the services, there's the parking, there's a parade ground, there's the memorial garden, there's an amphitheater, and on and on, so it's an awful lot of activity within 83 acres. Rarely too do we see, I think, well-thought-out future expansion for both, on both the grounds and the buildings, so I think that also reflects very well on the state of the planning. I think that was delineated on Slide 7, so that's, I think the Army should be commended for those types of things. And last but not least, while it's clearly not integral to the mission of the facility or the military in general, the preservation of the golf course and the restoration of the lost greens is important for morale and recreation, as long as you don't take the game of golf seriously. I think it was Mark Twain that talked about how you spoil a good walk in nature by playing golf. In the middle of the nature is to be discouraged, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Revancha. Mr. Hart, did you have?
I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. At Fort Belvoir, we've seen a number of projects come before us that have mission associations, and that, and we've approved those projects. In this case, I don't see that it affects our warfighting ability or the mission out of Fort Belvoir, and I'm inclined to say that we really do need the master plan to properly evaluate this and any future projects that may come down the pike before we start approving them.
Other comments?
I think the Army acknowledges that, and as we've seen in previous meetings, they have committed to producing the master plan as quickly as they possibly can, and they've given us interim updates. I think the language that we had previously used about it being difficult, or we discourage the Army as opposed to prohibiting, and if you submit, we will disapprove, is clearly not optimal, considering the mission of the Army, the number of projects, more than 20 that they have in the pipeline, and the direct mission correlation. I think the correlation here is clearly, a museum is not part of the mission of the Army, but the co-location of the Army Museum on Army Installation, I clearly see some strong linkage there.
We have, the Army has said that, well, the master planning is underway, and at the earliest, we will see it as mid-2012. The Army is very well aware that we struggle at times to place some of these projects in proper context without a master plan. The staff seemingly has had sufficient dialogue with the Army and Fairfax County on these projects, that they felt comfortable enough to bring this before you in this EDR, but action on the EDR is obviously a commission prerogative.
Other thoughts?
I think we should acknowledge the good faith efforts of the Army, particularly on the master plan. The Army was a big participant in a session that we had here, which we appreciate Mr. Costa hosting for us, and the importance of the master plan was reiterated by the staff, I think, and taken on board by the Army. Substantial to that, there was a visit at Belvoir with some senior leadership from the Army. I'm thinking about Mr. Hall came. Mr. Hall is the commander of the IMCOM, the Installations Management Command, South, Southeast Region? The region that Belvoir falls into. He's the kind of, I would call him the intermediate commander between the three-star General Lynch, commander of the Installations Management Command, and the Army Assistant for Installations and Environment, Ms. Hammack. So at the most, at some of the most senior levels in the Army, I think they are well aware of this requirement, the importance of this requirement. I think there's efforts being made to perhaps provide interim master plans, or something that would, again, be another step toward accommodating the staff and meeting the NCPC staff much more than halfway. There is a follow-up session, I think it's on the 20th of July, getting the lawyers from the Army, as well as the environmental experts together with NCPC, legal and environmental staff, to get a common understanding of what's required, when it's required, to what degree of definition it's required, so that we can proceed. So I think there's a lot of collaborative efforts behind the scenes that I just wanted to bring out and get documented.
Thank you. Commission operates on a motion. Is there a motion on the EDR that's before you?
Motion to approve, as submitted.
It's been moved, is there a second? Motion-
I'd second the motion, for the sake of getting a vote.
On that very enthusiastic second? We now have the EDR, it's been properly moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the EDR that's before you, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Others are not voting? If you're voting aye, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. If you're voting no, raise your hand. Four to two, motion passes, roars out of here. Ms. Kelly, you have another project? I'm sorry, I guess I shouldn't introduce it. Item 6C is the Route 1 Perimeter Fence South Post at Fort Belvoir, and Ms. Kelly continues.
This is the second project at Fort Belvoir today, and it is a proposed perimeter security fence along the south side of Route 1. The Army has submitted this for preliminary review. Staff had recommended to the Army that they submit for preliminary review to allow the project to be referred, and then for the Army to provide responses to the referral comments at the final stage. However, upon review of the comments received, staff is recommending preliminary and final approval of a segment of the fence and deferral of action on a different segment of the fence due to comments received regarding the US Route 1 widening and the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail. Here you can see the extent of Fort Belvoir, and here's Route 1 going through Fort Belvoir. It separates Fort Belvoir into a north and south post, and the red line is generally where the fence location is. Here you can see the existing security that is out there today, it is a cable barrier system, and this does not meet DoD security requirements, and the proposed project today is to upgrade the security along Route 1 to meet DoD security requirements. This is the general location of the fence, it will run from Gunston Road on the south side of Route 1 to the eastern edge of the Fort Belvoir property, near the Woodlawn Baptist Church. So the church is off post, and the project will end near the ball field that is existing today. The commission has approved multiple projects in the vicinity of the fence, mainly to BRAC, as there's the community hospital, as well as the dental clinic, and the Northern Regional Military Command, or Medical Command, excuse me, as well as the commission recently approved the United States Army Legal Services Administration, and the executive director has approved a child development center on the northern, or the eastern side of the site. To accommodate BRAC at Fort Belvoir, the Army has submitted, and the commission has approved, multiple roadway improvements. This includes the widening of Gunston Road and a new bridge for Gunston Road across Route 1, and the security fence will tie in to the improvements at Gunston Road. The commission has also approved the widening of Belvoir Road and the improvements to Pence Gate, and the project will also tie into those improvements there. The fence generally is located along an existing utility easement, as well as a roadway alignments. And you can see, when I toggle back to the next site, that due to the existing utilities and roadways, there's an existing tree cleared area, so the Army proposes to put the fence here to minimize the amount of tree loss due to the fenced project. The Army is proposing three different types of fencing for the project, depending on its locality and visibility. The first type I will describe is Type C, and it will be located adjacent to Gunston Road, and due to its visibility, the Army is proposing an ornamental fence. It will be a black ornament- Uh, it will be a black ornamental picket fence, uh, that is eight feet tall, um, as well as there will be a bollard, um, approximately eight feet on center that will support a rated K4, uh, cable barrier. The second type is called Type D fencing, um, and as we move away from Gunston Road and into, uh, the more wooded area, this, um, fence is proposed, um, it is a black vinyl chain link fence, uh, that will be eight feet tall as well, and will have the same bollard and cable barrier configuration. The Army is also proposing to use Type, uh, D fencing, um, in the eastern side of the site, uh, near the existing ball field. The last type of fencing proposed is Type B fencing. Uh, it is similar to Type C, is, that is, in an ornamental picket fence, um, that is eight feet tall. Um, what is different is that there will be brick columns approximately every six, 66 feet, um, as well as the cable barrier here is a rated K12. The Army proposes this, uh, to use the more decorative fence, um, in this B location outlined in red, um, due to its visibility from Route 1, uh, as well as this is, uh, one of the major, uh, gates to the facility as it will access the community hospital. Um, as I mentioned, staff had recommended to the applicant that it submit the project for preliminary review, um, to allow for comments from the National Park Service and state and local agencies. Upon review of these comments, uh, staff is recommending, um, approval of the section, uh, for preliminary and final approval from Gunston Road, uh, to Belvoir Road, uh, due to no concerns were raised, um, during the review process or staff's review of the project. Uh, however, we are recommending deferral action on the part of the fence from Belvoir Road, uh, to the eastern edge of the property, um, due to, um, relate, the relationship of the fence project to the U.S. Route 1 widening and the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail. Here you can see, uh, an image that was submitted to staff from Fairfax County, uh, that outlines, uh, the potential location for the widening of Route 1 in red. And then you can see the proposed fence location, um, in this dotted burgundy color. Um, the Army and, and VDOT have entered into a memorandum of agreement, um, that will provide approximately 148 feet, um, easement area for the widening of Route 1 through Fort Belvoir. The MOA also states that additional land area may be needed, um, and used, uh, for turning lanes, stormwater management utilities, and things of that nature. Um, upon, uh, referral to VDOT and Fairfax County, they submitted, um, comments stating that, um, the location of the fence around Belvoir Road may be in conflict with the widening of Route 1 and may need to be relocated in the future. And you can see here, um, that the area, uh, this is Belvoir Road and Pence Gate, and the area between the eastern boundary, uh, is the closest to the widening of Route 1. And we encourage the Army to, uh, work with Fairfax County and VDOT on the potential, uh, location in this area, um, to see if it could be moved to allow, uh, additional buffer area between, um, the fence and the widening for utility and stormwater management The Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail is a national trail, uh, established by Congress in the 1970s. Um, and since the, since the 1970s, it has been proposed to traverse, uh, through Fort Belvoir. And you can see here, the orange line is a line that was established, um, originally for the trail, uh, and it was evaluated in a 1997 environmental assessment conducted by the Army, uh, for the creation of the trail. Um, however, due to the fence location, um, no, uh, the trail can no longer traverse in this location. The fence requires, DoD requires all non-check, um, citizens to be outside the secure perimeter, and therefore, the fence location will, uh, inform the location of the trail in the future. Up, and you can see the fence, uh, location outlined in blue. And after it was determined where the fence would go, the Army proposed a, uh, a location for the trail outlined in yellow. After, um, sharing this with the Potomac Heritage Trail Association, they, uh, responded, uh, with the proposed red line. For the area that staff is recommending preliminary and final approval, uh, from Gunston Road to Belvoir Road, um, there is adequate space in between the widening of Route 1, which you see in green, and the proposed fence location. There are two, uh, in a sense, pinch points, um, one at Gunston Road, as well as one located here, and that is due to existing site conditions. And you can see how even the original, uh, trail had proposed to go in this location. Um, we'd like to note that the area between, uh, Belvoir Road and the eastern, uh, edge of the property is the, um, least amount of space available between the widening of Route 1 and the fence location. Uh, and we encourage the Army to continue to work with NCPC staff and MPS on the possibility to relocate the fence south to allow additional flexibility in the location of the trail in this location. Therefore, uh, for the area that, uh, staff is recommending deferral action, we have multiple recommendations. Uh, the first being that the, uh, the Army evaluate the moving of the fence down below Casey Road. You can see the existing, uh, proposed fence in black, and it, and we recommend a point south of the red line. Uh, for pedestrian access, uh, we recommend, um, that the, the Army evaluate pedestrian access at this point. While there aren't currently any, um, not many, uh, pedestrian amenities outside the fence with the rounding of white Route 1, um, there will be sidewalks as well as bike lanes, as well as the future trail, there will be many, um, pedestrian amenities for employees of Fort Belvoir to use. Um, as well as, uh, we encourage the Army to evaluate using Type C, the more ornamental fencing, um, in the area near the ball field. As you can see, it is visible from Route 1, and we encourage them to use the more ornamental fence in this location. As well as we request additional information, uh, from Fort Belvoir regarding additional, uh, perimeter fences that they see in the future, um, as well as we encourage the Army to evaluate this in the upcoming master plan update. With that, it's the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission approve the preliminary and final site development plans for the portion of the Fort Belvoir perimeter, perimeter fence located between Gunston Road and Belvoir Road, and defer action on the portion of the fence that runs from the installation boundary, uh, to Belvoir Road until further coordination takes place between NCPC, the National Park Service, Fairfax County, and VDOT. Regarding the location of the fence, um, with U.S. Route 1 widening and the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail. And notes that the Department of the Army and VDOT have entered into an, an MOA, uh, regarding the widening of U.S. Route 1, and that Fairfax County and VDOT have submitted comments saying that this, um, the fence location near Belvoir, Belvoir Road may be in conflict with the widening project. Supports the extension of the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail through Fort Belvoir and is, as an important national and regional trail amenity. And requests that prior to submitting the portion of the fence, um, that the commercial, the Commission is deferring action on, that the Army evaluate, uh, aligning the fence to south of Casey Road, um, evaluate using Type C fencing instead of Type D fencing near the ball field, evaluate opportunities for pedestrian access, uh, through the fence line, and provide information and timelines for any future plans for additional perimeter fences at Fort Belvoir. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Are there comments or questions on, uh, this project? Mr. May?
Yeah. Just a few. You said at the end, um, a recommendation with regard to future coordination on, on other fence. I mean, it's interesting just seeing this little segment of it. Is there, is there a fence that this connects to at all, at the other ends already that's not being upgraded? Or is there a fence and then is it not being upgraded?
Well, there's, um, the cable barrier that's on.
And so the cable barrier continues beyond, and that will stay?
Correct.
For the rest of the, the, I mean, how does a cable barrier work? Um, if you can get a, one of the graphics up there.
Oh, where can you?
Yeah, just go to the, I mean, all the way to the, to the end of it at the right.
Yeah.
So where does a cable barrier?
It goes towards the woods.
Okay, and, and then the cable barrier continue, continues to run through the woods?
I don't believe so, but I could, it does. Okay.
The cable barrier was originally installed after 9/11, uh, as a measure to, uh, kind of demark the perimeter boundary and to prevent any vehicle, uh, traffic that may come from other areas on adjacent access roads to private property from penetrating the perimeter of the installation. So currently, we have the cable barrier around the majority of the installation except in areas where terrain would prevent a vehicle from, from going through. That has, as Ms. Kelly pointed out, that has never actually met the DoD requirement for limiting pedestrian traffic, which is, uh, what the fence would do, uh, especially within regards to the main gate and the hospital area, to try to reduce the amount of pedestrian traffic that would just be walking off of Route 1 and in across, which they do now through this open field, um, and into the area. Now that we have a CDC proximal to the hospital as well as the hospital itself, this is a request from our security folks to upgrade our security finally with regards to having, um, one of the largest hospitals in, in the national capital area for, for Army purposes. So, um, it will not, I mean, in the future, as Ms. Kelly pointed out, our, our security folks would prefer to fence the entire installation, uh, recognizing that that would probably be an EIS and many years of discussion. Um, this was a, an element of the original BRAC project for security adjacent to the hospital, and, uh, it was deferred because of funding questions with the overall BRAC dollars, and is now being brought forward because as we near the end of BRAC and we have the money to do the project, uh, we've, the design has been done, but the actual funding for the project itself was, was left to determine until towards the end of the project, as all things were awarded. So, as, as we said, this will actually tie into existing cable barriers that prevent vehicular traffic, but not eliminating the pedestrian element of it. Uh, ultimately, it would be to try to reduce the pedestrian element, uh, from adjacent Route 1 corridor to the installation.
So, in other words, pedestrians, if a pedestrian wants to enter the, the, they, all they have to go do is go around the fence that you're installing here?
That is true.
And is it going to be, I mean, would that be a difficult trek? I mean, is it, is there, is there?
It would lengthen the trek.
Vegetation or topography that would make that an, an unlikely route for people to walk in?
Uh, it would, because it would actually, it would actually force people to walk. There, there's currently a bus stop right at the, uh, intersection of Woodlawn Road, and, uh, there's another bus stop at the old Constitution Road that comes in at Route 1.
Can you use the pointer?
Cheryl just pointed to it.
Yeah. The, um, so it would, in essence, deter people in the sense that they wouldn't have a direct connection anymore, and they would have to walk to seek out that path. Would it ultimately do it? No, it would actually give our, our, uh, security folks, though, a point of, um, surveillance and, and monitoring for them to, to look at and then come forward to us to, to request an extension of the fence, but. And the reason that we originally proposed D around the ball field is because the ultimate Route 1 widening, uh, as you can see, it shows a, um, at the intersection of Woodlawn, it proposes a new entry to the Woodlawn Baptist Church. So the reason we went with the chain link at that section and not the ornamental all the way down, the, the D fencing, uh, or the A fencing, or the B fencing, rather, I'm sorry, the B fencing all the way down was because we were trying to accommodate the expansion of Route 1 to a four-way intersection at the Baptist Church. And so minimizing the expense of the installing the, the higher-end fence.
Because you'll have to relocate it anyway.
Correct. And we recognize that fact, and there's going to be a, you know, we're going to have to reconfigure ball fields and everything in that corner once that happens, and that's why we put it in the section that we thought was the least bit of conflict, uh, because as Ms. Kelly said, we have a 148-foot MOA with the, with the county and VDOT that accomplishes everything and actually allows, um, expansion up to 176 feet at the intersection of Woodlawn, or, uh, Belvoir Road and, um, Route 1 to accommodate bus rapid transit through the center of Route 1 alignment. All of that can be done with the alignment that we're proposing, so.
Okay, just so I understand, where, where does the fence stop and the, and the, the cable barrier pick up? So right at that point? Doesn't look like it's very inaccessible from there. I mean, the reason I'm asking these questions is that you're, you're, you're introducing this, essentially a new fence element and saying that, that trail users can't go through the park through the original trail alignment, um, and, and yet, it's going to be a very porous barrier. I mean, you just have to walk around the edge of it and, and you can, you could walk through that same area. So just, it, I'm not sure I understand the logic of it. The, the, the need for the fence is driven by the proximity of the hospital, is that what you're saying?
It's the fact that the hospital is there and the, uh, increased security around Pence Gate. Um, we have as part of the, the BRAC process, we've reconfigured the gates to, uh, eliminate, uh, pedestrian traffic through the gates and force them to actually, you know, anybody who gets dropped off by a bus in front of our gates to actually walk through the gates per DoD regulation for security.
Hmm, okay. Back to the Route 1 alignment itself, the, um, the, the alignment or that swath there, how does that, uh, how does their plan accommodate for pedestrians and bicyclists on Route 1? Is there, I mean, are they separate? Are, are those all included within that right-of-way swath?
The 148 feet?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um, the, um, you, you cited the one pinch point, and the, uh, existing conditions there prevent, um, a, a different location for the, the fence and the trail. Um, can you describe what the conditions are that prevent that? Is it just a, a severe grade change or something like that? What's, what's, what's causing that pinch point? Because it looks like it, it overlaps Route 1 there.
Yes, it's, um, topog, well, there's topography issues here as well as there's an existing, um, bridge alignment there.
So isolated wetland, actually.
Oh, okay.
That we currently have a footpath, uh, boardwalk built across, uh, that was permitted and accepted a long time ago, and that's what the alignment of the trail was to, was to maintain, was so that we didn't have to, you know, redo the boardwalk and, uh, we could actually accommodate the, the walkers. It is the closest point, there is still a point of separation between the road alignment because that side of the road at that point with the turn lanes, it, the alignment actually represents, inclusive in that is a pedestrian sidewalk.
Which is not the same as the trail.
It is not. The trail, the trail as shown is a requested natural surface trail.
Right.
Uh, which is not the same as the trail on the GW Parkway, which is a paved surface trail. There will be a 10-foot wide paved surface in the Route 1 alignment on the north side or west side, depending on how you view Route 1, of, of this new alignment in the 148-foot wide section. So in both cases, pedestrian traffic will be accommodated via a sidewalk on one side and a multipurpose trail on the other.
Right. Last, uh, question from Ms. Kelly was the, um, I know that you've been speaking directly with the Superintendent, um, Don Briggs, the Superintendent of the Trail, and I, um, and I've had very limited conversation with him about this, but, um, I, my question is that with the portion that's not being deferred, um, the, the supporters of the trail and the Superintendent have all indicated they're okay, that there's enough room there, that there's no issues with that.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Reventer?
On the issue of the fence, I think the drivers are not only the hospital, but also the Child Development Center, correct? That it's somewhat exposed because it's not currently protected by any kind of a fencing structure.
It is a secondary element of it. Um, the primary driver was the, uh, the hospital and then the NRC and dental clinic immediately out front of the hospital. Um, again, the funding was the limit on not continuing the fence on. As I said, that plus an EIS, the fact that the, a portion of this was covered by the BRAC. BRAC EIS, but it wasn't actually fully vetted to go all the way down and around to get farther around that corner. Otherwise, we would have evaluated that.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm hearing that is, this is, this is all we could get, this is as much fencing as we get for the money that's available.
Yes.
And since it's BRAC money, it has to be obligated in the next sixty days? Is that, is that also correct? So, so you're under, under some pressure to get this?
Right.
Project approved and awarded?
Preferably, it has to be obligated in the next thirty days so that it can be executed.
Exactly. And the issue of being able to go around the fence, your plan is, as I understand, is to extend that fence. There will be an additional follow-on project so that sooner or later you have almost a continuous, continuous.
Well, as Ms. Kelly said, we would evaluate that under the master plan and then potentially discuss it in the master plan, the impacts very minimally because we, we feel that a full fencing of the perimeter, the way the, the emergency service or the DES, the security folks would prefer, would be a standalone EIS all to itself.
Sure.
I think comments that were received back is limiting, you know, large mammal migration and small mammal migration, things like that, and that is a concern for us as well. And how you overcome those and still maintain the security elements would be all part of that. Because this is meeting the requirements of a, of a security fence and therefore has nine-inch separation, most of the small mammal issues are not even an element, but the large mammal concerns are still there, so.
Okay. I think the point that you made also about there's a variety of surfaces that people could transit, that would, pedestrians I'm thinking about particularly on either the north or the south sides of Route One, either paved or, or naturally occurring surfaces that would seem to meet the spirit of intent of, of the trail and the access and the easement. It, it looks like it, it, there's a reference to, I think it just, it notes that there's a memorandum of agreement, what you're saying is, is going further. You're in compliance with all of the terms of the memorandum of agreement?
Yes, yes, we actually are.
As far as you could tell?
We've actually, I mean, the agreement was so we could build the bridge to accommodate the hundred and forty-eight. The hundred and forty-eight foot widened Route One actually accommodated three lanes of traffic in each direction, bus rapid transit through the center, it accommodated a ten-foot wide trail on the north side, and it accommodated a five-foot wide trail on the, or pedestrian sidewalk on the south side, including the required offsets between those trails and the curb of the, the road.
That's a lot of accommodation. Do you have any problem with any of the requests that the, the staff has identified here?
Only the, the BRAC.
About the type of, type of fence thing, that type of thing?
We're going to have to discuss this as far as the BRAC dollars and the continuation of the fence and how that's going to affect the, the funding issue, but, I mean, no, right off the, right off the bat, we don't. I think we've actually even prepared a draft response to this already.
All right, very good, thank you.
Further comments? Hearing none. The EDR before you is, again, to approve preliminary and final site plan for part of the fence, defer action on part of the fence, and to make certain requests for further valuation over that portion we are deferring.
I'm sorry, one other follow-up question. On the deferral, what's the, what's the developer position on the deferral? Does that then jeopardize your project if we break this into a couple of different pieces?
Again, we'd have to go back and talk to the core with regards to how we would do that in the, in the sense of whether or not we could award the, the money because the design's done.
Exactly.
And defer it until we get, you know, additional concurrence or discussion with the NCPC staff.
Okay, all right.
And we may be able to do that.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion without the EDR.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the EDR as before you. Further discussion, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The EDR is adopted. The last item on the agenda, item six D, is the modification to the general development plan to allow for an easement in the Little Falls Stream Valley Park. We have Mr. Wheel before us to present the project, and we also will have three folks who have signed up to speak following the presentation. Mr. Wheel?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a proposed modification to the Little Falls Stream Valley Park general development plan to allow an access easement between a private property and Little Falls Parkway. Little Falls Stream Valley Park is located in Montgomery County, Maryland. The proposed project is being submitted by the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, and the action before you here today is approval of the modification pursuant to the Capra-Crampton Act. So a little background on the Capra-Crampton Act, an act passed in nineteen thirty for the intent of acquiring land for the GW Memorial Parkway and also to acquire stream valley lands throughout the District Maryland and Virginia in order to create a regional parkland system for the region. The authority, Section 1B, basically what the Capra-Crampton Act did is it used, it provided federal funding for the acquisition of these lands, and then it turned the lands over to, to the local jurisdiction. So in this case, the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission owns the land in this parkland, however, it preserved the approval authority for NCPC over any sort of modifications to the, essentially the master plan for, for these parklands. In particular, the, the original master plan for this parkland is entitled "The General Development Plan for Little Falls Branch Park" from nineteen fifty-seven, and that plan has been modified six times over the last fifty years. So this would be an additional modification to that plan. So Little Falls Stream Valley Park is located in very southern Montgomery County, close to the district line. Again, the, the action before you is, is the proposed modification to the plan to allow this access easement, however, the, that action is directly related to the proposed redevelopment of this property right here, which is currently being utilized by, as a, as a center block distribution plant known as the Hoyt property. And, and a developer, EYA, is proposing to redevelop the property as a residential townhouse development. So staff evaluated the impacts from the proposed easement, access easement, as well as the, the development in, in its analysis. So you will note that the subject property is located directly adjacent to Little Falls Parkway and Capitol Crescent Trail between River Road and Massachusetts Avenue. Currently, the only site access is provided by Butler Road and an access easement along, through the parking lot of an adjacent property owner, which borders the Hoyt property. Here you can see the, the termination of Butler Road and the access easement which runs across this adjacent owner's parking lot. One other thing of note, there's, there's a perennial stream known, known as Willet Branch, which runs in between the Little Falls Parkway and the Hoyt property. So here's the proposed site plan for the development, and you will note the location of the proposed access easement. This shows a rendering of the, the access driveway, which would bridge over the Willet Branch stream. Here's a current photograph of, of the condition of the stream. It's in a concrete channel, and I included this, this photograph, which is taken just to the south of the site. This is actually the bridge for the Capitol Crescent Trail over Massachusetts Avenue, and this has a grayish stone facade similar to the facade that, that would be utilized for the access drive bridge to help it fit into the, the parkland setting. So a few things of note for this development. The development would result in a total reduction in impervious surface of approximately thirty-five percent, both onsite and adjacent to the site. The existing industrial use has encroached upon county parkland bordering on the east side of the site, and the developer would, if the development should go forward, would, would remove the impervious surface from the existing use and rededicate that to, to the county as a more natural pervious surface. The, the developers worked with the county to develop a formalized agreement, a number of conditions for, for agreeing to the, the proposed development, and that agreement has been hammered out with some members of the community, and, and I will go over some, some of the highlights of, of that agreement. That agreement, by the way, is included with your EDRs. So one of the conditions is direct access to the Little Falls Parkway provided by the direct access, excuse me, by the developments access roadway would be provided for non-commercial vehicles only. Commercial traffic, assuming the development is built, would utilize the, the existing Butler Road access easement, which would, which connects to the very northern part of the property. Basically, the, the requested easement area is approximately forty-three hundred square feet, and that same area would be provided to, back to the county related to the development through two different easements. Number one would be a public access easement that would connect Little Falls Parkway and the Capitol Crescent Trail, and another easement would be a green landscaped buffer easement that would run around the development. So the total area of those two easements together would, would be equal in area to, to the requested access easement area. And lastly, the, the developers pledged five hundred thousand dollars dedicated to the, to community-serving programs if the development should move forward, and one of these, one of the more significant potential improvements would be renaturalizing Willet Branch from its current channelized condition. So staff analyzed both the access easement and development related to four different items. Here's the general development plan under the Capra-Crampton Act. This shows the Little Falls Parkway, and, and this is where the, the Hoyt property is located, and I've noted the access easement with the, the green circle. In order to satisfy, satisfy the NEPA requirement to the, the requested access easement, the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission prepared an environmental assessment in which it assessed the impacts both to the easement area and the, and the development in three separate build alternatives. Each of the build alternatives assume the same townhouse development but with access provided in three different locations. The EA did consider servicing the, the redevelopment using these, the existing access today, which is provided through Butler Road and, and the access easement. However, the EA dismisses that alternative because, due to its infeasibility. Basically, the EA shows that, that all the build alternatives would, would not result in any significant impacts. And one last thing to note, the EA recognizes access alternative A, shown here, as the preferred alternative. And as I previously mentioned, this development has basically just gone through the county process to approve just the easement at this point, and that approval is contingent upon the NCPC's approval. However, this development still has a remaining planning process, which is estimated, it's estimated it'll take approximately a year, and, and through this continuing process, that requested access easement related to, to the, the site plan is now shown as access alternative C. And that relates to one of the, one of the recommendations to the commission I'll, I'll note in the last slide. So the EA looked at several different, twelve different impact categories. As you can see, the no action has several adverse impacts. Most of the impacts are shown to be short-term minor adverse impacts. However, the proposed development, redevelopment of the property as a residential development has a number of long-term beneficial impacts, and I'll, I'll briefly summarize some of the most noteworthy impacts. In terms of water resources, the current site has approximately ninety-five percent impervious surface, and, and it also does not have any stormwater management capacity at this point. So rainwater runs right off of the site into the Willet Branch stream, and the proposed redevelopment would not only remove a lot of impervious surface, but it would also utilize a lot of low-impact development measures, and it would adhere to, to the current county and state standards in terms of stormwater management requirements. In terms of visual resources, the residential redevelopment would be a significant improvement over the, the current industrial use. In addition, the, the landscape buffer would also help minimize any sort of visual impacts to adjacent parkland. The one long-term minor adverse impact you see up here is reflected by the conversion of the access drive across parkland, because again, the, the EA considers the impacts from both the access easement, the access roadway, and the development. Terms of traffic and transportation, the EA is supported by a traffic impact study, which the county reviewed, made a determination that any additional traffic generated by the residential development would be minimal, and it also certified that, that the local roadway network would, would be able to more than accommodate any sort of additional traffic. And in terms of noise, the, the noise levels from the proposed residential development would be, would be somewhat reduced over the current industrial use. So as part of NCPC's, NCPC's NEPA requirement, we did display the environmental assessment for thirty days on our website. We received three sets of comments, and, and the comments basically are summarized from, from, by these bullet points right now. There, there was a lot of feeling that the community was left out of the county's planning process up, up to this point. There were some, some traffic and site access concerns. Basically, there were several opinions expressed that the, that the environmental assessment associated with the proposed development and access easement were not detailed enough and did not consider some of the impacts. And there was also several opinions expressed that the proposed development was inconsistent with the current county redevelopment plan for the area, which is the nineteen eighty-two West Bard Sector Plant. However, upon staff review of, of both the impacts for the easement and the development, a lot of, a lot of the, the public issues, a lot of the public concerns that were expressed were more, more detailed site planning issues that, 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 that both the developer and the county have pledged to, to resolve as, as the development moves forward, should the access easement be granted. As such, it was the, the executive director issued a finding of no significant impact to conclude our NEPA responsibility. In terms of the public coordination, the developer has been meeting with the community over the last year. There have been three separate public county meetings to, that, that dealt with this access easement specifically, and as I previously mentioned, this development will continue to go through the county planning process to finalize the site plan and also to rezone the property from its current industrial zoning to, to residential zoning. Related to the National Historic Preservation Act, the EA made a determination that no architectural or archi, or archaeological resources were located on the property or Little Falls Stream Valley Park. Two architectural properties were noted located within a half mile of the site. One was the Westbrook Elementary School, which cannot be seen by the site, and the second was the Milton House, which is located right across Little Falls Parkway from the Hoyt property. However, the vegetative buffer is, is, is really, really thick at that point, and so any sort of visual impacts from a, you know, property redevelopment would, would be minimal. And thirdly, the, the EA showed that the Hoyt property has been significantly altered by the existing industrial use, so any sort of architectural relics have, have since been removed and disturbed. Based on these findings, the Maryland Historic Trust has made a determination that this undertaking will have no adverse effect on historic properties. And lastly, related to the nineteen eighty-two Maryland National And lastly, related to the 1982 Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Westbard Sector Plan, which again is the local county plan for the area, I've put up here three quotes that basically summarizes this proposed redevelopment and access easements conformity with this plan. Number one, that the existing concrete block plant, excuse me, intrudes upon the Willet Branch stream and presents an unsightly appearance along Little Falls Parkway. The existing Butler Road access provides, is inconvenient and is substandard for the existing commercial properties located along the roadway, and this includes the Hoyt property as well. And basically, the 1982 Sector Plan recommends the redevelopment of the Hoyt property as a residential townhouse community as long as a separate direct access can be provided between the property and the Little Falls Parkway. So, based on all of that and staff's analysis, it is the executive director's recommendation to the commission to approve the modification to the Little Falls Stream Valley Park General Development Plan to allow an access easement between Little Falls Parkway and the Hoyt property identified as Alternative C in the environmental assessment prepared for the project, to request that the applicant and the developer continue to coordinate with the community throughout the remainder of the local planning and zoning approval process, and to note that any changes to the size or location of the easement following the local planning and zoning process may require further commission review in accordance with Section 3D of NCPC's submission guidelines. And therefore, the commission requires the applicant prior to construction to submit any changes to NCPC's staff to determine whether additional review is necessary. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Will, very much. Unless there are any quick clarifying questions, I would like to proceed to the public comment period of any immediate clarifying questions. Hearing none. Let's go to the public participation section. We have three people who have signed up to speak. First, there is Mr. Robert Dyer, representing himself. Mr. Dyer, you will be afforded three minutes. Second, Mr. Akash Thakkar of the neighborhoods of EYA, representing a group. You will be afforded five minutes. And third and last, Mr. Michael Ma of Montgomery County Planning Department, who also will be given five minutes. Mr. Dyer, welcome. There's a clock on the wall to help you keep time as well.
Is that one up there?
Yes. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Robert Dyer, a lifelong resident of the Westbard area. This may seem like one small item on the agenda. I submit this may be the most significant vote you cast on the commission. It may determine the future of parkland throughout the region. Approval of this will set a precedent for the sale of public parkland to a for-profit developer. You can be sure developers and cash-strapped local governments are awaiting your decision. What's proposed here is unprecedented and an ugly intrusion into Little Falls Park. The applicant has access on Butler Road. The real reason we're here is the developer will market these homes as living in the park. Should a developer be able to commandeer a public park as a marketing tool, the ad nauseam referral to the ossified 1982 Westbard Sector Plan is weak. Would you treat a brain tumor today with the treatments of 1982? Then why would you make this decision based on environmental standards of 1982? I have a degree in history, so I'm concerned the county and the EA ignore the documented historical and archaeological significance of the site. The Milton House is mentioned, but not the fact that this stream was a regular stop for travelers along River Road, a New York Union Regiment stomped all over the site during the Civil War. There's no mention of the extensive Native American presence in the Stream Valley, nor of the Black community which resided on the Westbard Industrial Zone after Maryland emancipation, or that one of their structures remains on River Road overlooking the factory site. To allow this to go forward without historical evaluation and no provision for discovery of artifacts is insensitive to the heritage of these significant groups. Your staff's been told the developer spent a year talking with the community. That's not true. 99% of us didn't know our parkland was being sold until after the board rammed it through. I trust the county and applicant can list for you today the dates, times, and locations of these meetings and furnish hard copies of the announcements. If not, I suggest you table this matter. Giving the county and the developer everything they want today will only encourage them to thumb their nose at citizens in the future. Please save our park and deny this easement. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer, very much. Next on the agenda is Mr. Akash Thakkar, representing the neighborhoods of EYA. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commission. My name is Akash Thakkar. I'm a senior vice president with the developer, EYA. I'm here first and foremost to answer any questions the commission may have with regard to this proposal. I do want to give some very brief background about the project. We've been working with Montgomery County and the community for well over a year on this project now. The reason we got involved with the project is the Westbard Sector Plan as, is it Wheel?
While.
As Mr. While showed on the PowerPoint, the reason we got involved is because the Westbar Sector Plan of 1982 does in fact designate this particular property for townhomes if and only if access is available via Little Falls Parkway. The reason we need the access is Butler Road is a very commercial corridor today, will likely stay that way for quite a while. The Sector Plan recognized that in 1982 and hence suggested the idea of access to Little Falls Parkway. And so, the project is at a very early stage right now. We still have to go through a rezoning process with the county, a site plan process with the county. It'll probably take at least a year to do that, but what was most important to the county and the developer is to ensure that the, sort of, the baseline needs of the project were met vis-à-vis this ability to have an easement off of Little Falls Parkway to the property. So, that is why we are here today, because we can only move forward if we're able to have that easement. With regard to meeting with the community, there is a group called the Citizens Coordinating Committee of Friendship Heights. We've been working with them for well over a year on this project. They represent an umbrella organization of 17 key citizens and civic associations in the surrounding community. I personally have been working with them, and in fact, we do have dates. We met with them on June 30th, 2010, October 20th, 2010, and September 15th, 2010. As a result of those meetings, the agreement that you have as an appendix to your packet details a very long list of items that the community requested in order for them not to support this but not to oppose this. So, the community's position is, we won't oppose this, but the $500,000 commitment that we made to direct improvements to the community in addition to the like-kind easement. What came up in discussions with the community was with regard to precedent, even though these types of things have been done in the past, the community wanted to ensure that it would get back an easement of a similar size or an identical size to the easement that was being granted to us. So, we agreed, and the county agreed as well, and Michael Ma is here from the county, to provide a like-size easement in the way of access from Little Falls Parkway to the Capitol Crescent Trail and a green landscape buffer around the property in the way of an easement to ensure that in addition to the financial contribution to the county, that there would be a like-kind easement proposed. So, in conclusion, we have worked with the county and the community over the past year and a half. Just so the commission is aware, next Thursday, there's a hearing on the rezoning of this case, and the county has put forth, county staff, I should say, has put forth a positive recommendation with regard to the rezoning, which is really the first step in the entitlement process. A couple weeks ago, the county planning board voted to approve the easement agreement, which is part of your documentation as well. So, with that, I thank you for your time, and please let me know if you do have any questions on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thakkar.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for you.
So do I.
What is the current zoning of the site, and what would that allow?
The current zoning is I-1, and it allows commercial. The density, the highest density within that zone would be more than what we are providing today.
So, what would it be?
I believe it's a 1-5, but I'd get back to you on the exact.
And, commercial or industrial? Because it's industrial now.
Either or.
Either.
Yeah, yeah. The zoning is I-1, so I guess it's industrial one, but it allows for...
Commercial use as well as manufacturing or PDR, as they call it.
Correct. And the rezoning request, just so you know, is to a zone called the RT-15, which is a floating townhouse zone consistent with the Sector Plan recommendation.
Okay, and is that consistent with the density of units that you're proposing?
Correct. It is.
Okay. Is it possible that in the process of zoning it, that the overall density or number of units might be reduced?
Sure.
Okay. And if that happens, I mean, at a certain point, obviously, the cost of undertaking the project, you know, if you don't get a certain number of units and don't get a certain number of sales and so on, I mean, is there a...
A breakpoint.
Have you calculated a breakpoint where, because it's, I mean, I understand some of the concern about the site, because it looks like it's really packing in the townhouses.
Right. So, let me say this. So, we, the plan that you, there are a couple of plans you saw before you. There was an earlier plan that we went to the county with. The county didn't particularly support that site plan. We then went back to them with a second plan, which they are much more supportive of. So, just so you know where the county is, the county has recommended approval of the RT-15 zone, subject to the concept site plan, which you see on the right side of your screen there.
So, they're generally in favor of that?
They're generally in favor, but what, by granting us the zoning, that is only stage one, you know, different in different jurisdictions, we then go back through a formal site plan process, and, you know, my gut tells me that there will be some tweaking of this plan to ensure that whether it's density or other community concerns, we're going to have to, you know, get a plan that works well for the county and staff, et cetera.
Okay, one last question.
Sure.
And what's the depth of the rear yards, and how much of that is going to be part of the easement that you're giving up?
So, the easement actually is only about three feet around the entire property, because if you take three times the full circumference of the property, it equals roughly the 4,000 square feet that we're requesting from you today. So, the backyards will be anywhere between 10 and 22 feet, call it.
But there's no reason why it has to be square foot for square foot, right? You could give them an easement that's greater than the easement that you have and give them protection. I mean, I'm just, a three-foot easement is meaningless.
Well, but if I may, it's not as much from the community standpoint, not suggesting the commission feels this way. It's really more this issue of if you're getting a 4,500-square-foot easement, we want a 4,500-square-foot easement back, because when we started the discussion with Parks, $500,000, which is way above market for something like this, was no small number in our book. And Parks said, look, what we really want to do is invest back in this community vis-à-vis investments to the Capitol Crescent Trail, potentially naturalizing the stream adjacent to the property, mitigating invasive species around the property. So, that was the Parks Department's and the county's view on why they would consider granting this, because ultimately, I think the county felt that it did want to allow what it proposed in its Sector Plan in 1982 to move forward. So, the county felt that this was a good idea, because it was realizing what the Sector Plan suggested. We then got in discussions with the community, and they said, this is all well and good. We would certainly accept the $500,000 of improvements in our community, but in addition to that, we would like this, like, square foot for square foot easement in order to, so we can go back to our constituents and essentially say that there was no loss, net loss of parkland. So, that's the way the structure of the discussions unfolded.
But in theory, there could be a net gain of parkland if you were to give a bigger easement.
There certainly could be, but I think that we feel that, given what we've put on, what we've offered thus far, it seems like all parties up till this point have been in agreement. We certainly could. We would like to provide backyards for our homeowners as well.
Right, and backyards, I understand, but maintaining green in the backyards as opposed to what might happen, and one of the reasons I'm sensitive to this is that in the park service, we're continually dealing with issues of encroachment when people are, when their backyard butts up against the park.
Okay.
And understanding that there are restrictions on what you can do, I mean, and not just that last three feet, it's a difficult thing to police. It's, you know, it's like each neighbor has to be policing each other about what happens. When it's a three-foot easement, it's not only is it doesn't have, not going to mean a lot more green, it's also going to be a lot harder thing to enforce. If there were a, if there were restrictions that were more substantial, I think it would be a bit more manageable, and it would also bring greater benefit. You know, I don't know what the topography is here, but, you know, with easements or with yards like this, if you have, you know, if the land is falling off, people want to build up retaining walls, so they have, you know, flat green lawns there and things like that, and, I mean, if that's going to be allowed in these backyards, though, all of those things have an impact on the parkland around it. I mean, I would just want to, if it were our project, I think we would be pushing for a little bit more in those protections, but that's why I'm kind of pressing the issue with you here.
So, we're happy to, in our continued discussions with the Parks Department of Montgomery County, set up some restrictions, because we don't allow our homeowners to make any modifications to the backyards in terms of grades.
Good.
But an idea could be, for instance, to just go ahead and fence the backyards prior to the easement to ensure that you couldn't do anything, you know, beyond that easement, for example.
And is that a restriction that would be on their title?
We could put it in the easement. We could say, for example, the easement agreement with...
Oh, right, okay.
With the ground that we're giving back to the county, we could say, we could put a fence around the easement to sort of create a distinction between the public and private space, for example.
Yeah, I'm not sure fence is a good thing either, but so long as it's something that you can still negotiate, and hopefully the county is listening to this discussion.
The county's here, and Michael's, as he will tell you, and I'll tell you, a tough negotiator.
All right.
So, happy to work with him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. So, is this basically sort of a cul-de-sac? Is there any other kind of access in or out of this development except through this, except directly onto Little Falls Parkway?
Right, so look, can I walk, is there a pointer here? Thank you. The next, closer-in shot. Okay, so this is the site today. We could certainly start here. So...
You'll need to stay at the microphone for recording purposes.
Sorry, okay. Okay, so this is the site as it sits today. There is access via an easement from Butler Road. So, this, you can see the top of Butler Road right here, and then there's an easement through an adjacent property that currently provides access to the property. So, the trucks from the block plant go in and out of this easement. In discussions with the neighbors and the county, as you may know, commercial vehicles are not allowed on Little Falls Parkway. They actually are allowed if they're going to service properties off of the Parkway, but that said, given the community's reluctance to allow commercial vehicles on Little Falls Parkway to serve this development, one of the agreements that we worked out in the easement agreement with the county and the community was that commercial vehicles would continue to use this easement across the adjacent piece of ground from Butler Road to whether it be picking up trash, FedEx, mail, what have you, that would be an access point that commercial vehicles would use solely. The non-commercial vehicles would use the access off of Little Falls Parkway. So, to answer the question, there is a secondary access out of Butler Road that the site currently has today via an easement across an adjacent property. Does that answer the question?
Sort of. So, that's all vehicular. If you are a pedestrian or you're trying to access the Capitol Crescent Trail, how are you getting to it?
Good question. Okay, so today, you can't access the Capitol Crescent Trail via Butler Road or Little Falls Parkway, because there's no access from Little Falls, and there's no access from Butler. One of our proposals to the county, and we're in full agreement on this issue, is so you'll now be, if we were to move forward, you would be able to enter the property via Little Falls Parkway, and there'd be an access easement across the site and actually steps and/or ramp, it's still in design, up to the Capitol Crescent Trail. So, now pedestrians on Little Falls Parkway, as opposed to going down to Mass Avenue or up to River, over to the bridge that Mr. Wheel discussed, that's the current way to get on the Capitol Crescent Trail. You'd be able to walk into the site via, let's call it, you know, a five, six, five or six-foot-wide trail through the site, and there's about a 15-foot to 20-foot grade differential here, and go up to the Capitol Crescent Trail this way. And if you've been on the trail, there are other access points like the one we're proposing up and down the trail. So, if you're a pedestrian, biker, what have you, you'd now be able to go through the site up to the Capitol Crescent Trail or down Butler, and it's not the safest or prettiest walk right now, but you can certainly ride or walk down Butler and get up to Capitol Crescent when the project is finished, as opposed to now there not being any access.
Are there bike and pedestrian facilities currently on Little Falls Parkway?
Well, so it's, there's shoulder up and down Little Falls Parkway, and so there aren't sidewalks. I don't think that park roads can have sidewalks. That said, it's fairly commonly used, you know, what we heard a lot from this neighborhood, Green Acres, that the reality is, you know, we usually jump over to Little Falls, walk down, cut across Mass and jump onto the trail. So, for these neighbors, for instance, it would be beneficial for them to be able to access the trail.
To dash across...
If they so chose, yeah.
Is it a signalized intersection?
It is not a signalized intersection. There's a signal, so there's a signal at Little Falls Parkway and River Road up here, and Little Falls Parkway and Mass Avenue down below.
Okay, what's the distance between your proposed easement and access and River Road? Less than half a mile?
Less than half a mile, yes.
Okay.
And just, again, it's sort of early to do this, but we've worked with county traffic with regard to site distance and such. And so far, county, it's a... Montgomery County DOT is supportive of the access. We've had... we've done traffic counts, we've done site distances from coming from the west, which is Mass Ave, and coming from the east, which is River Road as well.
Butler is a county road? Public road?
Butler is a public road. The public part of the road doesn't come to our site. It comes to the site adjacent to us, and then we have an easement, or the owner of the property today has an easement to get from Butler to the Hoyt property.
Have you looked at improving Butler Road and using that easement through the... from Butler Road to create an access, to create a more charming entrance to your development?
We looked at it in detail, and we came to the conclusion that we couldn't move forward with the Butler Road access, because Butler Road is an extraordinarily commercial road leading all the way up to River, so you'd have to do a tremendous amount of improvement. And frankly, the uses aren't very consistent with adjacent residential, and hence both the developer, but the county on its own, had this notion in the Sector Plan and today still, that the appropriate access is off of Little Falls Parkway. So we did study it. We just felt that we couldn't move forward with the project with Butler Road access.
I guess that's all I have. You don't happen to know the walk score for this site, do you?
I actually do. It is in the high 60s. And what you can walk to off of Capitol Crescent Trail, and actually do this run three or four times a week, is downtown Bethesda is about a mile and a half. So it's not close, but there are tons of folks who use the trail for more than that distance. So that's one sort of commerce center, if you will. And part of the reason why residential is probably supported even more now than in 1982 is because downtown Bethesda is about a mile and a half. There's also a Whole Foods and related shopping right here. So that's, you know, a quarter mile from the site. You have a Whole Foods and other community-serving amenities.
Also on the trail.
Also on the trail. So it's actually, you know, it could work very well for pedestrians, whether you're walking through our site or from our site to the Whole Foods and liquor store and hair salon and other such things adjacent to the site.
So this could be maybe even more trail-oriented development in terms of an orientation than you've given it so far?
I do believe so, yes. That's a totally fair statement. We think a number of folks will be attracted to it because of the walkability and bikability to various places.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Thakkar? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The final speaker is Mr. Michael Ma with the Montgomery County Planning Department. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and the member of the commission. For the record, my name's Michael Ma, with the Montgomery County Department of Parks of Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. I'm here mainly to answer your question. I do want to take a few minutes to address a couple of issues. First one, let me just say this. We don't come to you very often, so I really appreciate your staff's help with us, give us advice on your requirement, and to bring this item to you today. So I appreciate that. Second one, I want to emphasize the procedure and the process about the planning board's decision on this easement, granting this easement. The planning board granted this easement back in February. Both the planning board and the full Park and Planning Commission granted easement back in February. Their approval are subject to your approval today for this item. But the planning board took action on this easement issue as a property owner, not as a regulatory body. And so their decision purely on granting this easement has nothing to do with the future regulatory approval. And even the planning board approved the access easement as of today, the development still is subject to a long regulatory process, and three major steps. The rezoning case, which is underway now, and then later, if the planning... if the rezoning request is approved by the county council, then they still have to go through subdivision process, they still have to go through site plan process. So there's a long, direct process down the road, and so the reason I'm bringing this up is there will be a plenty of opportunity for any concerned citizen to address their issue through those processes. And this first step is rezoning, which is underway. There will be three public hearings before the county council would approve this rezoning. So there will be multiple opportunities for the citizen to address their concern. And since the planning board approved this easement as a property owner, all the issues like access, like environmental impact, will be fully addressed through the later regulatory process. So this is very important to the planning board. I just want to bring that to your attention. Couple of things that you mentioned earlier, a question about the distance between the site and River Road. This is about 1,000 feet, 1,000 or 1,100 feet. And the question about the encroachment, it was a very relevant comments, and we do have concern about encroachment. There's many, many encroachments through our park system, so... and anything we can do to avoid that future problem, we definitely will do. And this green space easement was not part of the planning board's idea. It's really is a proposal raised by the community groups. They want to have this equal square footage exchange. And but I fully agree with their early comments on the encroachment, and we need to do something to avoid that happen. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. Any questions? Mr. May?
Yeah. What's... what length of the Willett branch is channelized?
I think it's along, almost along the entire... along the entire frontage. So I say probably 400, 500 feet.
But it's only... it's only in that vicinity. It doesn't go all the way up to River Road or...
Right, and it doesn't go down to...
Yeah. Okay. And do you know how much of the... how much removal of that channelization could be accomplished with the money that may be available within that $500,000?
Right now, we don't have a clear estimate, because that work has not been designed. We are working with the EYA. If the county council approved the rezoning, we will work with them to design this. We have done many restoration projects, so we have a good idea what need to be accomplished, but in terms of cost, we don't have a clear answer. We believe it should be enough to do this.
Really? Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think that of all the things that you could possibly do to mitigate the impacts of having this development within, you know, that's flanked by the park setting there, is to get rid of the channelization. Do so much... give so much benefit to the rest of the watershed, so...
Yes. And we are currently doing another project in Silver Spring. That's the exact same thing, removing existing concrete channel to re-naturalize it.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dennis?
Yeah, thank you. In the interest of full disclosure, I'd just like to let it be known that in a former life, I had the great honor of representing these and other communities in that part of Montgomery County for around 25 years in local and state government. And by sheer coincidence, I had occasion just yesterday and the day before to walk from Friendship Heights Metro Station down River Road to Dick Spicer Sunoco Station, where my car was being repaired. And I don't know if that makes me part of the walk score or not, but when I saw it flashed up there, the concern expressed about inadequate community input during the county's planning process, that sounded very familiar. So moving forward, I would just encourage you, Michael, and your principal, and the developer, and all those involved in the process, to keep on meeting with the Friendship Heights Citizens Coordinating Committee, and Mr. Dyer's group, and Green Acres, and all of the other affected homeowners. And I do have a specific question, because I'm a little bit vague on the access from the Hoyt property to Little Falls Parkway. There's no flashing light being contemplated, or is there, or traffic light, or what kind of access? How would you turn left? And could you address that? Could someone address that?
Are you talking about this?
Yes, yeah.
And as I mentioned earlier, those issues will be fully addressed and reviewed later when they review site plan subdivision. That's the ripe time to do review that. And so right now, it's a very early stage of, very conceptual, even at the time the rezoning applications.
Yeah, well, I would suggest that's a very important...
Yes, yes.
...point. And just by way of a walk down memory lane, I remember... do you remember the Maloney Concrete Company? Ever hear of that?
No, I don't.
Okay. On Arlington Road, roughly where the CVS is now, there used to be the Maloney Concrete Company, which with a cement mixer would constantly be rotating and so on. And obviously, before any development of any appreciable nature could proceed in Bethesda,